Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Ship.
Here.
Alderman Geenan.
Here.
Alderman Clark, absent. Alderman Mayberry.
Present.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Here.
Alderman Tolanair.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Mayor Tom.
Here.
You have a call.
Do the pledge allegiance? Stay standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Item number five.
Minutes of the November 13th, 2017 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
Moving to second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Update Rock Island. Couple items here. Holiday schedules. Rock Island City Hall and all branches of the Rock Island Library will be closed on Thursday, November 23rd to Friday, November 24th, 2017. In observance of the Thanksgiving holiday, Refuge Collection and curbside recycling will still be on scheduled Tuesday and Wednesday, but the rest of the week will be one day late. The city wishes everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Twenty-eighth Annual Quad City Christmas Arts and Crafts. On November 24th, 25th, and 26th, the QCCA Expo Center will hold their annual Christmas Arts and Craft Fair. There will be 200, there'll be whom? 200 exhibitors showing off their handcrafted products Friday and Saturday. The fair will be open from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and then on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Tickets are $5.00 apiece, or get a free admission with your new unwrapped Toys for Tot, Toys for Tots. For more information, please call 309-647-0400. Holiday lighting contest. The City of Rock Island Beautification Commission is sponsoring their 32nd Annual Holiday Lighting Contest. To nominate a resident or commercial light display, send the name and address of the display via email to douglas.catherine@rigov.org. Or you can call 309-732-2905 by 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, December 6th. Judging will take place on the evening of December 11th, when all displays should be illuminated by 5:00 p.m. Winners, winners of the 2015 and 2016 Holiday Lighting Contest are not eligible. Can't be repeats. Winter night, winter lights. The Quad City Botanical Center is starting a new tradition for the whole family. Winter nights, winter lights. The Botanical Center gardens will be in full, with full winter bloom throughout the month of December, and aglow with thousands of beautiful lights. Bundled up and stroll the gardens. Bring the kids for crafts, or just plain, plan a visit to one of the special events. To learn more about the special events, please call 309-794-0991. The Botanical Center is located at 2525 Fourth Avenue in Rock Island. Thank you very much. Item number seven.
Presentation of the calendar year 2018 budget.
Okay, good evening. I present to you this evening an overview of the 2018 budget. Before you, on the dais, is your binder for the 2018 budget, and it includes several tabs, and two of my most favorite ones are the financial, financial summary section, which is located towards the front. It has the Budget Digest message along with some financial trend monitoring system graphs that, that tell the story of the city. At the end of the budget, I wanted to point out the miscellaneous tab. That miscellaneous tab also has a lot of useful information and historical data as well. I also wanted to mention that the budget document will be available tomorrow on the city's website as well. So we do have a lot to cover tonight. Wanted to kind of share what we'll be covering. The, the budget overview is a little longer than in past years, so we have a few more slides than, than in the past. But we will talk about the goals that were part of this budget process, and then we will cover citywide expenditures and revenues, and then we'll dive into the general fund budget with some detail. And then we will cover some of the 44 funds. We'll look at the utility fund, those enterprise funds, along with park and recreation, library, and then of course at the end, we'll have some discussion or presentation on the property tax levy. So the city's budget goals were first to prepare a balanced budget. And balanced budget doesn't always mean that revenues exceed expenditures. In some cases, when you look at our funds, expenditures might be more than revenues, and that's generally purposeful. We do have fund balance in some of the funds, and we want to make sure that we maintain adequate fund balance. In other cases, we do have negative fund balance, and over time, we're looking to improve, improve those. We do again have 44 funds to budget. Some of the city's funds do have challenges, and it was management's goal to keep financial impacts to a minimum, and at the same time, to provide services that the citizens and businesses of our community deserve. Also, it was our goal to keep fiscal responsibility in mind in developing a budget. Contained within the budget are the city's fiscal policies, under that policy section, which provide direction in several areas, including fund balance level, contingencies, capital assets, use of our gaming funds, et cetera. The city has weathered some fiscal challenges, and it is important to preserve the current position and to take steps to improve our financial position in the future. So we'll start with citywide, government-wide budget overview. And total expenditures equal a bit over $117 million. There are nine departments, and the general fund represents the largest portion of the city's overall budget at 35.1 million. Water, sewer, storm and refuse are the second largest portion at 29.6 million. Economic development, that little 7.7 million dollar slice, does include our seven active TIF funds, and our CDBG programs and KIRLIF loans. Another view of those 117 million dollars of expenditures, this view is by category, and so the largest portion, largest category of our total expenditures is personnel. That pie makes up 41% of our total. The 47.7 million is actually down from 48.2 million the year before. Kind of interesting to go through the budget process and have all of the funds come together and see what the story tells when it comes together. I found this interesting because we do have wage increases with our six union contracts, and police and fire pension contributions have grown. So what was the offset? Part of our budget balancing initiatives were to eliminate positions, delay hiring, and continued restructuring that has taken place in a couple of departments, in total library, parks, and the finance department. Services makes up 24.6 million, and debt service and transfers are both about 9% of that total. So here's a look at our citywide revenues. And citywide revenues equal 115,974,540. Charges for services represents the largest category at 24.8 million, and accounts for 21% of our revenue. The majority of charges for services is in the enterprise funds, which are also known as business-type funds, such as the utility funds and parks. The debt proceeds category reflects loan proceeds from the Illinois EPA Loan Program, and also budgeted, budgeted as a small amount of new bonds that would represent the city's match for the 38th Street and 18th Avenue state-funded projects. We do hope to delay that bonding as long as possible. Property taxes at 17.9 million represent not only the proposed levy, but also the tax increment that comes into the TIF funds. You will notice total revenue is less than expenses. The difference is being funded by current reserves. Most notably, it is planned to use current fund balance for some of the bond payments that have been paid by the gaming fund in the past. Before I turn to the next slide, just wanted to point out this little pie that kind of broke out here, the local and state taxes of 22.6 million, because we'll talk about the detail of those next. The 22.6 million dollars in budgeted state and local tax, these are sorted in descending order with gaming tax being the largest of our state and local tax. We project 4.4 million dollars to be received next year. The second largest is sales and used at 3.9 million, and the third largest is 3.8 million. Last year, I reported that the largest portion of our local government revenues was actually income tax. So it's always interesting as you're updating the slides for the next year to see how things have changed from last year. Income tax has been a subject of discussion even before the state announced in July that one of their budget balancing actions was to reduce the local government's share of income tax by 10%. And so that was effective with their fiscal year that began July 1st. Now they did say that they would distribute two more payments in their fiscal year, but do keep in mind that, that's just a cash basis, they had been two months behind. And they have actually caught up on that when I, when I checked last, so it is appreciated. But it doesn't mean more revenue for us, because we were receiving 12 distributions every year. Just was a little bit late. Gas tax makes up the smallest portion at almost .4 million, so there at the bottom, I have asterisk gas tax, because we are proposing to increase our local gas tax by one penny. It is currently two cents, and we're proposing to increase it by one penny. It went to two cents in 2010. So let's talk about general fund. Since we're talking about state and local tax, this is a good time to do so. The last few years, balancing the general fund has been a challenge, especially with flat revenues in the state and local tax category, and in the property tax. At the beginning of this budget season, one of the guidelines I issued to department directors after doing some calculations was to please propose a budget that was 5% less than their current budgeted level. They did go through and make cuts, but when it all came together, we still had a general fund budget. Naturally, being a service, a service provider, our expenses continue to increase. At the time of guidelines, we did know that our actuarially determined police and fire pension costs would be a certain level. Departments did struggle with this request. And then after we calculated those guidelines, we received the, the additional not-so-good news. On this slide, the first two rows are actually the total of the amount that the Department of Revenue notified the city that they had overpaid us in sales tax and home role sales tax. This was a result of, of a large business that had gone through an audit, and they discovered that they had paid too much sales tax, and, and so the state did reduce, reduce our distribution this summer, and that was about 80, $83,000, $82,000. I already mentioned the reduction in income tax, and so that translates to about $400,000 a year. And so $200,000 of that was felt in this fiscal year that we're in right now. Then in August, got more bad news, and that was that PPRT income, which we had budgeted at a, at a level that was about 2.9 million, was going to be reduced by 23%, and that's lasting. So that's about $700,000 a year, so $350,000 impact to this year. And then in addition, the state did impose a new fee to cover their costs, and that was a 2% fee on their administration of collecting our sales tax and distributing it to us. And that's about $45,000 a year. So one of our budget challenges is reduced state income, and that affected our, our budget year right now. And so I did want to mention that a lot of careful attention has been placed on our current year budget, because as we look to next year's budget, we need to make sure to know where we think we're going to end up this year. Are we going to end up in a deficit or a surplus? And that factored into where we would be next year. Thanks to some actions by the department directors and some positions that had been unfilled, we did have some savings. So even with the revenue reductions, because of the expenditure reductions, I am projecting that we will end up this year even, which, which is important. But we also don't have fund balance to help next year's operations. So another budget challenge that the general fund faces is rising police and fire pension costs. For the time period shown, these costs have risen 2.5 million in total, so this is a seven-year period. The solution for funding was to reduce the general fund's portion of the tax levy, and I'll show you some slides later that, display that in a graph format. Police and fire pensions are state-mandated, and were earned by current and former members of the police and fire departments as part of their compensation to provide for the safety and well-being of our citizens. The city does stand by our obligation to fund police and fire pensions, but we do have to be mindful that it does create some, some budgetary impacts. Another challenge is that much of a local government's expense is related to personnel, since we are in the business of service. Over 70% of operating costs relate to personnel expenses. The majority of employees are subject to collective bargaining contracts with negotiated pay increases. And then of course, our health insurance costs continue to go up too, and so for next year, they're projected to go up about 5.2%. So for the general fund in particular, the budget contains several proposed budget solutions, basically in three categories. One was expenditure reductions, revenue increases, and third was use of reserves. Expenditure reductions include an elimination of five vacant positions, two of them being police officers. Delay in filling other positions. Further delay in vehicle purchases, and this has been an area where the city has balanced the budget in the past. Also, delay in contracted street maintenance, resurfacing, and restriction, reconstruction projects. Revenue increases include ambulance fees, gas tax, and property tax. For ambulance fees, our rates generally have been at the, the median level of a survey of 24 local ambulance providers, and staff is recommending a slight change in that instead of a median, which the median is the middle point of those 24. There's, you know, 12, 11 higher than us, 11 less than us or so. We're proposing to, to be closer to the average, plus 10%, but in addition, we're proposing to add a non-resident component to ambulance transports as well. That is common here in the Quad Cities and in the state. Obviously, much of our fire department is, the cost of the fire department and our personnel is borne by the residents of the city. Gas tax, we talked about already, and then property tax, we'll talk about that a little bit more at the end. So this table that I inserted is total general fund revenues, and this is for Fund 101, which is the general fund, plus also some funds, little funds, they, I footnote it at the bottom, they start with twos. A lot of them are police-related funds, and the Rock Island, the Labor Day Parade, they're part of the general fund, but fund accounting just allows us to segregate those receipts and expenses into a separate, separate category. So total general fund revenues for the 2018 proposed budget is 35.2 million, so that is up from last year about 960,000, or 2.8% in total. General fund expenditures at 35.1 million is $242,000 over last year, or 0.7% increase. So general fund expenditures, mentioned 35.1 million. This slide breaks down that expense by department, and provides you the percentage and the dollar amount associated with that. Trying to use appropriate colors, blue for police, red for fire. A little bit of levity there, so. Both the percentage for each department of the total general fund budget is shown, plus the total budget in rounded million. And I shouldn't mention that at the onset of my presentation, I do talk a lot in rounded million. Police constitutes the largest share at 40% in 14.2 million, followed by fire at 9.8 million. And Public Works makes up 15% of the budget, which is 5.3 million. The sum of those three departments is 83%, 83% of our general fund budget. So we'll slice up that 35.1 million in another way, and just by categories. And so personnel, the largest portion there, eating the other little pieces there, it looks like Pac-Man, 26.8 million is personnel, and that equals 76% of our total, our total budget. The next largest category is services, and that is 18%. So let's dive into some details on that personnel expenditures. So personnel expenditures makes up several pieces, if not just salaries. Salaries is the largest component at 56.6%, but it also includes pension costs, health insurance, overtime, longevity pay, fringe benefits, professional development, education, and then when we do know that someone's leaving, we will calculate what their severance cost is going to be and budget that, and so that was a little over $100,000. So personnel costs, percentage of the total again is 76%, and I did want to add on that pension cost, the 7.8 million, that's not just police and fire, it's also I M R F, the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund cost, along with FICA and Medicare costs for those employees that we pay that to. The first three categories, salary, pension, and health insurance, actually make up 94% of personnel expenditures. So breaking down personnel costs by department, 22 million, 22 million of that total is related to public safety, which includes both police and fire, and that is 81% of our total. The next largest is Public Works at 6.6%, and then Community and Economic Development, CED, that's the acronym there, is 4.3%. Finance, IT, general administration, which includes the mayor and council, and human resources make up the rest. So we'll stop talking about general fund for a moment, and let's talk about Public Works Enterprise Funds. So the next three slides will focus, as I fall over, on the Public Works Enterprise Funds, and then Parks and Library. And Parks and Library are both supported by property taxes. And then we will review property taxes. So recall that there are different types of funds in government fund accounting, and the tabs in your budget binders help to delineate them, but for those listening or watching, Enterprise Funds are also known as business-type funds, sometimes they're called proprietary funds, but their accounting is meant to act more like a business, and so charges for services are set at a level to cover costs and debt, and also to provide savings for future infrastructure improvements. The water fund is worth pointing out, as it is the largest of our Enterprise Funds, with expenditures in 2018 planned at 12.7 million, although capital makes up a good portion of that, at over 6 million. And much of that is related to our water treatment filter building, so the, the costs that are associated with next year's expenses. I should add, there is an asterisk here too. So proposed rate increases for wastewater are 3%, so 3% is built into the proposed budget, along with a refuse increase of $1.00 per month. Parks and Recreation Fund is also an Enterprise Fund, and is made up of several departments, including the golf courses, Whitewater Junction, Rifeback, and others. In addition to user fees, this fund also receives support from property taxes. Of the funds, 5.6 million in revenues, so 5.6 million in revenues and 6.1 million in expenditures, property taxes make up 33% of their revenues. Staff have made great strides in reducing their expenses over the past two years, which you will hear more about in their budget review session next Monday. The library fund, total expenditures are 2.6 million, and that pretty much closely matches their proposed revenues for next year. So of $2.5 million in revenues, their proposed property tax is 2.1 million, and that the city's, the finance department is proposing that property tax levy, and it does equal a 1.83% increase over, over last year. So the property tax, proposed property tax levy for library is 2.1 million of their $2.5 million in revenue, or 82% of their revenues. All right, property tax. So the budget for you includes the proposed property tax allocation of $12,384,168. Compared to last year's proposed levy was $11,280,000, and when it was extended was $11,282,000. So sometimes on the extension, it increases just a little bit. So this $12.3 million in proposed tax levy is a $1.1 million increase overall from the last levy. The blue pie, I couldn't make it blue and red, I suppose I could have made it stripes, but that is 54% of the proposed levy, funding the police and fire pensions. So another view of this year's proposed levy compared to last year's extended levy. General fund operations, which is general fund, the first three rows, general fund, police pension, and fire pension, would receive 16% of the total tax levy. The general, yep, the general fund portion of the levy has been decreasing, or 16% increase. The general fund portion of the levy has been decreasing the past few years, and I will show you that later. So here you can see the proposed raise in the levy for library, and then Parks actually has three rows, because they are funding different pieces of, of their operations, but the increase for them is 1.83%. That 1.83% is actually December 2016 CPI. Last year, they received a 1.48% increase. You'll note too, that there is one row that does have a reduction, and that is Public Benefits, also known as our Debt Service Fund, and so staff is proposing to reduce that portion of the levy to help keep the overall levy decrease as low as possible. Included in this graph is the city's property valuation, kind of down towards the bottom there, which is part of the formula to calculate a taxing body's property tax rate. This past August, the county notified the city that the tentative valuation would be 475 million, which is a .73% increase over last year's certified valuation. It is important to note that there are times when the final valuation is different than the estimate. In fact, a lot of times, it is a little bit more. Last year, the projected increase was 2.96%, and I believe it came in at 3.5%, which, incidentally, actually lowered our property tax rate. So when I was up here last- So when I was up here last year presenting the property tax levy, we were proposing a property tax rate of two point four zero zero two. So when the actual valuation came in a little higher than estimated, it drove down our, our property tax rate just slightly. Which is a good way, segue into a graph that shows our tax rate by collection year. So this historical schedule shows the city's tax rate back to the mid-eighties. In the early nineties, the rate reached a high point of four point one two four nine at that high point there. The tax rate has remained very level for the past decade, so the more recent time is, is here. After reaching a high point in two thousand five, when the rate was two point five seven three, there was a decrease in two thousand fifteen, and again last year, as a result of the E A V coming in higher than originally expected, and we did not amend the tax levy. The tax, the levy to support C Y two thousand eighteen that is proposed estimates a tax rate of two point six zero zero two, that final data point on this graph. So as I mentioned before, the property tax rate is, is basically a, a formula, for those of us that love algebra, and it's a, a formula related to our E A V for the city. And so this graph shows E A V back to two thousand three. The city's E A V did decrease in two thousand twelve, kind of towards the end over there, and two thousand thirteen, but has seen an upward trend since that time. For two thousand seventeen, it increases less than last year's tentative valuation, again, point seven three percent. And I did add this little trend line on this graph, just to kind of show that we are headed in, in a positive direction with our E A V. This graph shows, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven-year, uh, history with this year's proposed levy, two thousand seventeen levy, funding two thousand eighteen levy. And the, that last column equals our twelve point four million dollars. As I said earlier, fire and police pension costs are provided through the Pension Board's actuary and have continued to grow. And as I said earlier, what we have done is trying to keep the overall levy dollars even, or as you can see, decreasing, um, over this time, the police and fire portions of the levy have increased. And so with that, the area that has decreased is the general fund, so that bottom portion of, of the graph. What you can't see so much, though, is that Parks and Library have, in the first four years, remained very, very flat. In fact, um, no change at all, but each of the last three years, we have increased their levy ever so slightly. So we would be remiss if we talk about property tax, if we don't, uh, remind ourselves, and those listening at home, or those that are behind me listening to this, is that the city's portion of our property tax is less than a quarter of our total tax bills. And so this does show a six-year history. And I don't have this year's, because why? Not everybody has passed their, their, uh, their taxes yet, but, and we don't know what our final valuation will be. So this is the levy that we adopted last year and, and payable in this year. So the city's portion of that tax bill is twenty-three point three percent, and this is, uh, I believe it's Rock Island County, Rock Island Township, because we do have different townships. And so each of the different townships can have a slightly different rate. So on our property tax bills includes the county, the township that you live in, school district, airport, college, and then our transit district, and the college, of course, is Black Hawk College. And our city portion of the levy does include library, parks, and fire. And it is important to remember that not all city, city levies, uh, have those services under their property taxes, but, but ours does. The school district does make up the largest portion of the tax levy at fifty-two point So this table provides an attempt to communicate what the impact is to our residents when we're talking about a property tax increase. I have included that high point from two thousand five, that, where in that ten-year period where we started and, and have declined, the rate was two point five seven three. Last year's levy ended up being two point three eight eight two, and the proposed levy for two thousand seventeen again is two point six zero two two. So this, this graph shows what the city's portion of a property tax bill would be for a home that's valued at a hundred thousand dollars, and that is occupied by a homeowner. This gives you the portion of the levy and where it's funded, so you can see that the general fund portion is, is less, with fire and police increasing. The total of this year's levy compared to last year's levy is something that we have to keep in mind, so it would mean for, uh, of a home valued at a hundred thousand dollars, a fifty-eight dollar increase for the year, which divided by twelve is four dollars and eighty-seven cents a month. Summing conclusion, it is my honor to present you the two thousand eighteen budget. A mix of solutions was used to present a balanced general fund budget, increasing revenues, cutting staff, reducing spending, using resources or fund balance, in order to continue to provide a high level of service to our citizens. Some of these actions are difficult, but through them, it's, it's, if supported, allows the city to maintain our ninety-day reserves. It allows us to maintain our bond rating, which is investment-grade. I do want to thank city staff and directors for their countless hours spent on this budget. It is challenging to budget in uncertain times, and so many of our costs are related to personnel that these revenues support. Our next step on the budget is for, uh, departments to present their budgets to council, and so we plan on being here at five o'clock, not here, sorry, the police community room, at five o'clock next Monday. And, uh, we hope to go to ten, no later than ten, and we do have additional time scheduled that following Saturday, if needed. The budget will be presented for approval on Monday, December eleventh, with a second reading, uh, and final on Monday, December eighteenth. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, uh, Stephanie?
Just a comment, one, one quick question, I guess. First of all, thank you for the, those countless hours that you and your staff have been working. I know from the paperwork we've been looking at, it's very complicated. Uh, this is either for you, Stephanie, or for Randy. When was the last time, uh, Rock Island City Council had a tax increase? How many years has it been?
Well, I will kind of jump in there, and I see Randy reaching for the microphone. Let's go back to this slide, and we do, when we talk about a tax increase, there's two components. One is the dollar that we levy, and so by nature of being a home role unit of government, we levy a dollar amount. And that dollar amount is spread amongst all of the parcels within the city. And secondarily is our property tax rate. And the rate, of course, is calculated, um, as that, that little mathematical function, which is a, a product of our value in the city. And so when we talk about raising, uh, rate, the last time that we raised our property tax, um, I would say that in this seven-year period, the, while it looks like in dollars it decreased through two thousand fourteen, and slight increases in fifteen and sixteen, although in total, this is not a lot of, a lot of money, what's important to know is to look at the property tax rate, and let me see. The rate has remained very flat for a ten-year period. It has ranged between two point three eight and two point four for ten years. I hope that answers your question.
Well, and I wanted to clarify or explain a little bit, uh, for people who are watching, uh, from home or who are here listening tonight, um, and it, it is, uh, a complicated process as far as the entire budget goes, in terms of the rate and the valuations of, uh, properties, et cetera, so, thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Okay. There you go. Thank you, appreciate that. And normally, we don't have a public, uh, open, uh, comment deal, uh, this time, or about this topic, but, uh, but we're willing to, to make a waiver of that, and is there anybody in the audience that was planning on speaking in regards to the budget? We can work on that now, instead of having you wait at the end of the council meeting. Is there anybody here? Yep, come on up. If, and if you, I don't know if you signed in, in the back to, to talk or not, that's fine. If you wouldn't mind, there should be a piece of paper up there and a pen, hopefully there is. Nope, there we go. If you could, uh, put your information on there, please. So if you have any questions, we can get back with you on it. Um, try to limit these to about five minutes, and if there's more than one person, to keep it, so we don't repeat, but, so.
You'll be able to read that. Um, I'm Dale Muller. Uh, all of you have, have received my questions and seen my com, seen comments coming back from Randy, you know, and it's, and Stephanie, anyway, and, and I, I really appreciate them, I mean, she's responding to me Sunday evening, and I'm thinking, Randy beats this woman. But, anyway, you know, I, I'm really, you know, I'm concerned about the, the, the tax increase and the perception that it, that it raises becau, of that, that Rock Island has very, very high taxes. And, and perception is everybody's reality, and it just, it doesn't, I don't think that helps us, and I think it, it will drive down, um, or keep, I mean, keep our real estate taxes, or real estate values from increasing. But I, a question for, for Stephanie. E A V, did, better talking to this, um, did you see, you, you had the projection of what Rock Island's valuation is going to be, did you see what the valuations were for any of the other neighboring cities? Okay. I'm looking, you know, another, another comparison, how are we doing versus everybody else?
Sure. We can take a look at that.
No, I just, you know, it, you know, uh, for, I think, you know, for the city to, to grow, you know, since, as I put in one of my many emails, uh, you know, how much our, our population has decreased, and we're trying to then cover, cover expenses with less rooftops, I, I think is what, what we're going through, and I think, think that's a, you know, also directly reflects how we're doing on retail. I mean, why does somebody want to open another store when there's nobody there? So, those are my concerns.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If not, then we'll move on. We have item number eight.
Proclamation declaring November twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen as Giving Tuesday.
Pam, I believe there's somebody in the audience that wants to receive this, and, uh, read that, and then we'll come up and make a presentation. It reads, whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people. And whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Rock Island. And whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve on other, serve others throughout the holiday season and during other times of the year. Now therefore, I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, proclaim November twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen as Giving Tuesday. And the City of Rock Island encourages all citizens to join together to give back to a community in any way that is personally, personally meaningful.
Uh, just a few words.
Sure.
I'm not sure how many people are familiar with this. It's a national day of philanthropy, and last year, twenty sixteen, a hundred and seventy-seven million dollars were raised on that day to, uh, various not-for-profits across the country. And this has gone global, so there are also seventeen other countries involved in this. So, uh, I represent Christian Care, which is our local homeless men's shelter, and we rely heavily on donations, and so we really appreciate this, and hope that you'll give Giving Tuesday a thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number nine.
A special ordinance establishing a stop intersection at Fifteenth Avenue, regulating eastbound and westbound traffic at its intersection with Twenty-Eighth Street.
Motion to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
One's ribbon-cutting.
Just seeing that.
Yeah, Public Works, yeah. No, there's been enough discussion.
Yes. Roll call.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item ten.
Resolution declaring support for the Illinois Bicentennial Commission in planning and promoting initiatives to recognize and celebrate the bicentennial of the state of Illinois officially observed on December third, twenty eighteen.
Motion to adopt the resolution as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? I'll make a comment that we do have a special flag, commemorative flag, that the state has sent out, it's down on my desk, and, uh, Randy and I are working on a little, some plans, a little ceremony, to do a flag raising, uh, December fourth is what they're asking for at noon. They're like, asking communities across the country to raise a flag, have a little ceremony, take the pictures, and promote it, and everything else. And so, uh, I don't have any details of that planned at this point exactly, but we're working on putting that together to help commemorate this, uh, occasion. So, roll call, please.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item eleven.
Claims, A and B. A, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one in the amount of forty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-five cents to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, for the Thirty-Third Avenue Court Reconstruction West of Seventeenth Street project for services provided from October twenty-third, twenty seventeen through October thirty-first, twenty seventeen. And B, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number three in the amount of six hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents to General Constructors Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa, for the Outfall Seven relocation project for services provided from September thirtieth, twenty seventeen through October thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payments for claims, items A and B as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number twelve.
Claims for the week of November tenth through November sixteenth in the amount of one million two hundred and seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars and ninety-one cents.
Move to allow the claims.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? There are none. Roll call.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 13.
ACH payments for the month of October in the amount of $2,372,582.45.
Motion to approve the ACH payments.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 14.
Purchase card claims for the period from September 27th through October 26th, 2017 in the amount of $65,834.48.
Motion to approve the purchase card claims.
Second. Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 15.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a special ordinance amending Chapter 4, Article 1, Section 4-1 Building Codes, Section 4-3 Plumbing Codes, Section 4-4 Mechanical Codes, and Chapter 4, Article 2, Section 4-23 Electrical Codes as it relates to the 2015 International Building Code and 2017 National Electrical Code.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 16.
Report from the Fire Department regarding a special ordinance amending Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 6-16, 6-19A, 6-20, 6-21, and 6-22 of the Code of Ordinances as it relates to the 2015 International Fire Code.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second. Move to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 17.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the adoption of the Quad Cities Enterprise Zone Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of East Moline, the City of Moline, the City of Rock Island, the City of Silvis, the Village of Mylan, and Rock Island County for the designation of the Quad Cities Enterprise Zone.
Move to approve the intergovernmental agreement as recommended and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second. Move to second. Any discussion?
Just want to thank Randy and Chandler and the CED staff for getting this done. Because as I read this, when we vote on this, this becomes effective within 15 days or was it January, January 1st?
Well, this will be submitted as part of our package.
Okay.
Assuming we're awarded the enterprise zone, it would go into effect the 1st of January in 2019.
Okay.
But this has to be part of the package that we submit.
But they have done a lot of work. There's, you know, this and of course, the next one, there's a lot of, we needed letters from support from a lot of businesses.
Sure.
About their capital investment and employees and everything else. And, you know, there's, at this point, 30, 31 of those letters have been received and that sort of thing, and a majority of those have been from the city of Rock Island. So there is some bright spots and looking that people are thinking very positive in the city of Rock Island about investing capital in both in people and in buildings and materials. So this will send a great story to Springfield to approve an enterprise zone to help economic development. So they worked hard at it. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 18.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an ordinance establishing an enterprise zone in the cities of East Moline, Moline, Rock Island, and Silvis, the Village of Mylan, and the county of Rock Island, Illinois pursuant to the aforementioned Quad Cities Enterprise Zone Intergovernmental Agreement and subject to the certification and approval of the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity.
Motion to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 19.
Report from the Finance Department regarding the five-year capital improvement plan for calendar year 18 through calendar year 22.
Move to approve the five-year capital improvement plan as recommended and authorize staff to implement the CY 2018 projects and expenditures pending approval of the CY 2018 budget in December.
Second. Move to second. Any discussion?
Well, I know a handful of us are very happy up here to see that the money was put in here for the Community Caring Conference. I want to thank Randy for hearing us out on that, as well as others on staff who were involved with putting that money in place. When I look at what we're up with on this plan for next year, it's a lean list, and I can tell that there was some bitter pills to swallow for things that have to be put off. So I know that's spread across every department. And one of the questions I had in looking at this was the funding that is set aside to continue to pursue the city of Rock Island absorbing the water service for the arsenal. Are we still committed to that? Is there still a light at the end of that tunnel to pursue?
So that's been put on hold for quite some time. We expect it to start up again in 2018. So we have some money budgeted. Whether we'll actually go through with it, that would be up to the council at that point, and we'd have to look at a lot of variables.
Sure.
But we just wanted to have a placeholder in there for that.
In case it, okay. Very good.
There's no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 20.
Report from the mayor regarding an appointment to the Human Rights Commission.
Move to approve. The appointment is recommended.
Second. Move to second. And for those in the audience, people, it's Vince Thomas to the Human Rights. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 21.
Report from the city clerk regarding an activity application and resolution for the Quad Cities River Bandits Race to Home 5K to be held on Saturday, April 21st, 2018 from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
Move to approve the event and adopt the resolution as recommended.
Second. Move to second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 22. Other business.
I would like to give Alderman Ivory Clark our sincere condolences and, no, wrong word. Our hearts are out for him, and his symphonies are out for him and his family.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If we could have the Director of the King Center come forward, Jerry Jones, and express what happened this weekend, Saturday and Sunday.
Thank you. This past weekend, the Martin Luther King Center, with the help of over 150 volunteers, some of them in this room today, were able to provide over 1,000 plates of food for our Thanksgiving celebration. We were able to, on Saturday, deliver over 700 plates of food to people who couldn't come to us, and then over 300 people came and were fed and enjoyed fellowship at our facility this past Sunday. And so I thank all the volunteers, all the contributors, and especially many of the departments that helped deliver the food. This is a real team effort, not just on our part, but from the entire city's part. So my gratitude goes out to all that were involved.
Great. Thank you. And I guess I'm gonna do a comment here about American Job Center that Alderman Virgil Mayberry and I attended and also the city manager. It's a new, it was just opened, reopened, if you want to call it that. They've been closed for several years, but they were open before that. They're down at 542nd Street in Rock Island. But it's a center that actually is a one-stop shop for a lot of people. If they get displaced from their job, they can go down and apply for unemployment insurance. They can help with job training, get pointed in the right direction, help with paperwork. They do a lot of collaboration with other agencies and colleges, like Black Hawk College is an example, a number of, number of others. They just, it's a great collaboration with, shoot, I think there was a half a dozen or so organizations at least that they worked with. But, you know, it's really very helpful to have this all in one stop. People have transportation issues, and so, or they get confused and a lot of barriers of go see this one, now go over to that building, go to this town. The closest center was in Sterling, I believe. So it wasn't very close. You could do it online. But now we have it right here in Rock Island, but for the Quad Cities. They also employ right now about 25 people and look to expand that. But I think it's a, it's a great, I'll say, tool or instrument to have here to help people that they're in need and at a time that's tough for them, so to get back on their feet and be productive. So I just wanted to make that mention. It's a good ribbon cutting.
Mayor, I'd like to share a couple of comments. I know we have been going through this budget process here for a couple of months now, and we've had individuals like Mr. Muller and others reaching out to us and expressing concerns that we anticipated would come about property tax increases or cuts and worries of laying people off. And at the bird's eye view, from my time here on council, I just wanted to say at the start of it, and I shared this with Randy over the weekend, that I feel that this is the most professional and thorough job this city has done in my experience in terms of reviewing and preparing this budget for council and for the elected officials. You know, how the process used to be really pales in comparison to how much time we've had to dig in with staff on this and to really understand this from a details perspective ourselves. And for a couple of years during these budget conversations, I have, I have said, not out of excitement or any sort of joyous desire, that at some point, we were going to have to contemplate a property tax increase. Because I could see the trend line years ago with what was going on with revenue and expenditures and an increasing debt service, all the while, a city committed to keeping its core services functioning at a high level. And so I guess I just want to put it out there publicly that every one of us up here, we know where this city used to be in terms of population. But I think the harder that we hold on to that idea of some sort of fallen state, the more disservice we do to where we're at right now. And it's a disservice to those who live in the city now. I think it's a disservice to those who have businesses that are successful in the city right now. I think it's a disservice to the people who work very hard every day for the city, in the school district, to keep this city operating at a very high level. And, you know, a quote that I picked up on a long time ago is that all appears yellow to the jaundiced eye. If you have a perspective and the way that you see something is negative, then that's how you project it. And if you feel so inclined to then put that out in the paper and help sort of spread this anxiety or negative energy about what has to be done to keep the city's doors open, then I don't necessarily think that's the most productive thing. But I understand where it comes from. And I feel like there have been, in recent years, a great deal of distrust in this institution for a variety of reasons. And a lot of those reasons are what have completely reshaped this council, have completely reshaped the political balance in the city. And I can say from firsthand perspective, I believe that we have, that the health and credibility of an organization starts at the top. And I think we have a great city manager, and I think we have a great mayor, who, being new to this political arena, is asking a lot of questions. And Mayor, I'd like to give you that credit and that acknowledgement that you've really dug into this process, and we're not even done with it yet. But you've really dug into it and have asked a lot of questions and brought that, I'd say for lack of better words, business mind into this process and thinking about dollars and cents. And I think that's very much needed. I know you are, everywhere you go, advocating for the city and being a positive champion for it. And I know Randy is being a good steward of our services. And amongst ourselves, we are having our debates, and we're pushing for certain things. But we're doing so, whether we're fighting for more money for a community group, I think it's really all for the big picture of where we're at now as a city and where we want to go. I'm proud to be here in Rock Island. You know, I wouldn't want to be an Alderman in Moline. I wouldn't want to be an Alderman in Davenport. They got their own problems. They got debt. They've got crime. You know, they've got all sorts of issues. And we've got our issues, too. You know, the challenges all across this country of wanting more businesses and wanting more residents, aging workforce, rising pension costs, those are not unique to 61201. Everyone's dealing with them. And I feel like this crew here with our stalwart staff, working evening hours, weekend hours, this is really the best that we can do, and I think what we're doing is really good. So I just wanted to put that out there. I know we'll continue to feel it, but we have to do what we have to do, what we were elected to do. Each of our districts, each of our wards elected us to make not just the easy decisions but the tough decisions. And I hope more people will join us next Monday here from each budget, or here from each department, more detailed report, and keep giving us the feedback. But I just wanted to put that out for the record.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Did anybody sign up back there? I don't, not back there?